We have a conference call. Dan, you can take the microphone.
Yes, sir.
And I'll get another.
The Wonder Ball Goes Round and Round.
Hi.
Hi, please, Ed.
Hi, Paul, it's Sue Collins.
Hey, Sue.
I have the Selectmen and Sergeant Shapiro, Dan Meehan, and Mike Ullrich here. Can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you good, yeah.
Can you hear, can you hear people talking?
Um, I can't, I'll say so, but I can hear you good, too, but there's orders in the background, they just give us a look through the phone and probably hear me.
Okay, that's Paul Pelletier on the phone, as everybody knows. And I guess who's gonna start this thing off? Any volunteers?
So what are the, what are some of the, we're talking about trains now, right? Is that the subject we got here? And we're talking about the over-serving and the lack of their bathrooms facilities on site.
Yep, perhaps the accidents that have occurred that have...
Yeah, I'm not sure we're speaking right now, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm Royce Heath, I'm the chairman of the board tonight.
Yeah.
Paul, I guess there's been some questions about some of the serving up there. What's going on with people going out in the streets there that maybe shouldn't be? Or how is that occurring?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Over-serving.
Yeah, we've all, our staff have been trained. We've just recently recommended Frank Line is retired. We had him out, had a full day training program with them. So everybody's been all trained to over-serve. We've shut off people many times.
Have you got any of the incidents?
Well, no, I mean, I emailed you as they come in, so you should have all the emails.
Anytime.
Anytime.
Which I had, I don't have them with me.
There's an indication that someone was coming from where it was over the limit.
Paul, how could it happen if anybody's leaving there with, that's had too much? Is that something that...
Did you tell you, did you ever go through the phone?
I say, how could it happen that anybody leaving there, leaving your establishment, say, one or two o'clock in the morning, or whenever you close, and, you know, obviously being intoxicated?
Well, that's not a intentional thing, if that is. I, you know, you don't tell me any incident or what's happening. I heard someone say something about emailing, but no one has addressed any incidents or anything with me. But we, you know, we only serve people who have so much alcohol per hour. We keep track, try to keep track of what they're having. But, you know, if somebody leaves the establishment and they take a hop and they're drinking in their vehicle, or they're smoking marijuana, or getting somewhat intoxicated in other ways, we don't have control over that, or if they're coughing pills, or that type of thing. You know, we look at the people, how many drinks they're getting. We don't just serve people. We work in business, sustained business. We have to over-serve people and just have them, you know, and have situations arise. You know, we're responsible for what we do.
It will also appear that some of them are slipping through the cracks, though. We've had instances in town where people have left at your establishment, obviously not prepared to drive on the road.
This is Chief Meehan, I run the fire and EMS side of it. I know that many of our, well, not many, but some of my calls that we've been on, the people have stated that they've come from your facility.
Yeah, and, you know, I said before when we were having meetings in the past, if you guys are having any incidents, that I'd like to be notified for a couple of reasons. One, I can look back on the cameras and check the timeline. I mean, just if somebody said they were at Train Tavern, and I'm not trying to screw around any issue, but if somebody's saying they're at Train Tavern, they could have left, went to a rental house for a half hour, an hour. You know, they could have gone someplace else and had, you know, something to drink elsewhere, or smoked a drink going down the road, or coughed pills, or, you know. You know, I think we do a pretty decent job. Like I said, I've had our staff trained several times with the state program that they have as far as serving. You know, if no one addresses any particular incidents with me, it's hard for me to back up anything with it. And that's why I have three cameras on the property. So if there is something, we can establish a timeline. We could see if they were over-serve. If they were over-serve, I can see who the bartender was and address an internal issue. But if that happens to be the case, and that's why I've stated in the past before that it, you know, would be nice for me to know if you guys have an incident, if you would notify me, and then we could look into it further and see if it's an issue that happened at my place, or if it's something that happened in between wherever they left and maybe went someplace else.
So, okay, I guess at this point, what we're looking at is that collaboration from now on between yourself, Paul, and either Sergeant Shapiro or Dan Meehan here.
Well, I guess the bottom line is, is that the number of instances where we're either directly or indirectly related, and the common theme is your establishment trains of people being intoxicated. The problem with it being indirect is that you're dealing with somebody that isn't at your establishment, so there's a very difficult way of tracking that. But I think the chief and myself are both alluding to the fact that we are dealing with people on a regular basis that are inebriated, that are causing trouble, and the theme there is they're coming from your establishment. So now I'm just stating that's what we're looking at. So you can say that you're not over-serving, and that's fine. I'm stating that, you know, we've had people leaving your establishment that say they're leaving your establishment with a fairly close timeline and them being over the limit. I think there's at least two OUI crashes in recent history. Now, I start to mention, I believe there's 14 other incidences the last time we had this conversation, and at least one fatal where they're directly coming from your place. My position, the last time that we had this discussion, was that every time we have an incident that comes to our attention, I will advise the town hall, and then it's up to the town to decide whether or not they want to continue to have you serve liquor.
Right, I understand that, and at that meeting, I also had said to you that if you have an incident situation, that if you would notify me, and that way I could look into it, because you're saying directly or indirectly. So if you've got a situation that's indirectly, and it's somebody that left and it's an hour later after they might say, yeah, we were at Train, but they might have left and gone somewhere else a half hour, an hour later. I don't have no control over what they do after they leave.
Well, that's true, again, again, my point, my point is...
For me to look into it, you know, I'm not trying to argue with you or screw around any issues. What I'm trying to say, if we can work together, like I said the last time we met, and then I can look at the cameras, and I can establish a timeline. I can see what, watch the camera, how long that person was there, how many drinks they were served during the time when they were there, and a timeline to when the incident happened, whether it happened right after they left my place, five minutes down the road, or it happened an hour later now.
Well, I mean, we just had an OUI crash out of there where the timeline was pretty tight, I believe. So, I mean, it is what it is. We got two, we haven't had the BAC back from the second one, so... What was it? Yeah, two-two, yeah. So that's not somebody that, you know, had one or two drinks after the fact. I mean, that's somebody well on their way.
Yeah, and, you know, so I heard I'm having a little bit of trouble here, you guys, so you guys kind of in and out a little bit, so I'm trying to follow you. But I think earlier someone had mentioned that you emailed the Selectmen when there's an incident?
Correct.
Can you copy that to me as well, if you're sending it to the Selectmen and you add me onto that list?
Well, I'll have to...
I want to work with you guys.
Right.
You know, I'm in business to do the right thing. I'm not in business for people who are on the road and get hurt or cause problems. You know, that's not how I operate my business, and I want to work with you guys and with, you know, yourself, the state police, the Selectmen. And so if we can work together, and if I'm copying on this stuff, and I had mentioned this to you last year when we met, then it's easier for me to take a timeline. You know, we had a situation a year and a half ago. We had a bartender that we ended up firing because we found out that she was over-serving. And that's why, you know, we've got, I've got several bartenders, and I need to, that makes it easier for me at this point if I have a problem bartender. You know, you can't watch everybody every second that you're open. I mean, we do, we do, I think, a pretty relatively good job overall. But if you have an incident, it lets me see how many drinks that person was served, how long they were there, who the person was that was serving them, and then I can correct if there's an issue with the bartender, if there's a problem there.
Well, let me just state this. We patrol five other communities that all have other restaurants and serve liquor, and we don't have any complaints from them whatsoever. OUI crashes or secondary incidences where we're going there, they're saying they're coming from that establishment. So the only place, to my knowledge, in the five communities that we serve, where there's a common theme, where there's people causing trouble because they're over, that they have too much alcohol in their system, is trains. So I'm just stating that as that's what we know. You know, you can draw your own conclusion from that. I'm just saying that's, you know, and it's not just me, obviously, because the chief is hearing the exact same thing. And again, we have five other communities which have other establishments, who serve food, and you're allowed to imbibe while you're eating. And we don't have any, that I know of, any incidents of an OUI crash or incidences of people causing a problem because they've been over-served, either directly or indirectly. So I'm just stating that, so objectively, you can look at...
When you're in an OUI crash, I think you may be referring to Mr. Rudell that was on Little River Road. You know, and we looked into that. When he turned, this came in, we gave him a copy of the tab. And if you're racing down the road with your buddies on a curve, you get an accident, you can't blame that on us. We didn't cause that, he wasn't over-serve. And we didn't cause that crash. The kid wanted to do a little hot rod car, and he's celebrating how his buddy does. You know, whether you call that an indirect assault, but he wasn't over-serve, you know, from our establishment. You know, we had a copy of the bill of what he had consumed during the time he was there. But when you're trying to pass three other guys on a curve, coming onto a bridge, you know, I feel bad, I mean, he comes in all the time, and, you know, he used to come in quite frequently. His family still comes in. But, I mean, to say you indirectly or indirectly blame that on us, you know, we didn't put the foot to the pedal and we didn't over-serve him, so... You know, like I said, I want to work with you, and you're saying you do five other communities. I'm not sure what the five other communities are that you service, but, I mean, I should say, I'm sure during the course of a year, some of the other communities, there has to be, I'm sure you've got to pull somebody over for an OUI or something, that, you know, can't believe that you have five other communities that you never write up an OUI or something. I mean, it just, I don't know. But what it all boils down to is, I, you know, I had asked you last year, the same thing as I'm asking you now, if you would copy me with the email that you sent to the Selectmen, so I can work with you guys and we can figure this out. And, I mean, all the theory, the internal problem, we can tighten it up and make it better for all of us, so...
Paul, I got, I'm Royce Heath again, I've got another rather pointed question. Isn't it kind of late when someone's already dead to make a call to the Selectmen or even the state police? Shouldn't we be going a little more, excuse me, sir? Shouldn't we be going a little bit forward?
We gave the trooper, we showed him the receipt of what Mr. Rudell had on our property, and he wasn't over-serve at our establishment, for the timeline that he was there and the amount of alcohol he had, so... And he was obviously racing down the road, that, I mean, you're saying that they're a little late. We didn't cause that.
Okay.
By his own actions, he had to ask his personal responsibility if he had to be down the road.
How about this? This is from one of the offices to Sergeant Shapiro here. "Last night, I was called out for an intoxicated female who walked into someone's house on Little River Road." It's kind of funny, but, long story short, she was highly intoxicated, as was her boyfriend, who was the last car in the parking lot of trains. He was trying to get into his car, but luckily did not have the keys. He was standing next to a pile of vomit and could barely stand. Obviously, since he was the last person there, people who work at trains must have seen him by his car. It seems they were over-serving people, and we're getting calls after one o'clock in the morning, when they close, because people are so drunk. It is hard to track these calls as they do not all come into a train's address. They happen somewhere else afterwards.
Yeah, well, yeah, I know that exact incident. The woman went to Dave Moody's house because she took the keys and didn't want to drive, and she was walking home and knocked on the door of Dave Moody's house, and it was closed out. And the boy currently was back at the vehicle, and she took the keys, so they wouldn't drive. But we very seldom are open till one o'clock. I mean, it says I was supposed to one, but, you know, we do last call at midnight, and usually by 12:15, 12:30, everybody is cleared out of our place. And most nights by midnight, we don't have anybody in the establishment.
So I take it this, that was an isolated incident, incident, as they call it?
Well, unless you've got more to tell me about. I mean, you guys, you know, like I said, I don't know about these incidents. If you don't, you know, it gets emailed to the Selectmen, but then you keep me out of the loop, so I don't...
Well, the last two incidences, you were obviously familiar with. The trooper talked to you about the fatal on River Road, and you're familiar with this one. So you are familiar with them.
I'm familiar with that one, because Dave Moody's actually my mate, and he told me about it the next day.
So you are familiar with them, that's my point. If there's an incident that's directly related to trains, the trooper almost always goes back and speaks to you about it. So you are made aware of it.
Rudell, you're trying to blame that on me, and I spoke to you. We showed it to the trooper when he came in, what you were serving, how long you were here, so...
Well, again, my position is, the last time we were here, you had a, we had a series of cases that I provided to the Selectmen, which are either directly or indirectly related to trains. I forwarded you any other instances that come to my attention, either directly or indirectly related to trains. Again, we police five other communities, other communities that have establishments that serve food and liquor, and to my knowledge, we don't have any issue with them, let alone any issue that is as apparent as this is. The, you know, if you talk to a variety of different people, you know, showing up at different scenes, and the common theme is that they're all, have been at trains, then I would say that the conclusion is, you know, you can draw your own conclusion from that, but I think the objective person looking at that would say that there certainly may be an issue there.
Paul, this is the chief again. I handled an accident a couple months ago where the wife told us that her husband goes at trains all the time, gets over-served, and comes home very intoxicated. And that was told to me directly.
Okay, and then again, if you had contacted me and said, hey, this person, the wife contacted me, they don't serve, I can look. He might come to trains and have a few drinks. He might stop at a buddy on the way home and have a few drinks, and they drive to the basement, too. You know, so that's why, if you guys got me in the loop and you contacted me on this, we can take a look, and we can look at the cameras, and what's that person there, what videos, or what happened, what's all the situation.
Well, Paul, Selectmen Heath again. What if the shoe was on the other foot? What would your, what would your answer be?
I'd say, if somebody wants to work with you, then work with them. You know, let's take a look, let's see what the timelines are and see what's happening. Let's see how long that person was at the establishment, and, you know, how many drinks they were served. And you can, you know, the cameras don't lie. You watch the cameras, and you look, okay, we had an incident. Mr. Smith was here, and supposedly was intoxicated at your place. Okay, let's take a look. We can see what time he arrived, what time he left, how many drinks he had. You know, who was serving him, who the bartender was, and then you can get to the bottom of it.
Well, I guess what I'm confused about is I don't have to work with any other establishment. They just basically don't over-serve, and I don't have problems. And my position, the last time that we had this meeting was, is that any incident came, I would advise the select people of it. My position is, is that if you don't over-serve, I won't have problems, the town won't have problems. We're here a year later, we still have problems. So the commonality here is I don't think a lot's changed. I don't believe that it's incumbent upon me to, or the state police, to work hand in hand with you day in and day out to make sure you don't over-serve. I think the bottom line is, don't over-serve, and then we don't have problems. The other communities that we police are responsible. We don't have these issues. We don't have to take the added effort and time to work with anybody because they're following the rules. So my position is, is that, you know, it was the last time that we were here, that if we have an incident, I'll advise the Selectmen. The Selectmen can review it. They can make a decision whether or not they believe that your establishment is acting appropriately. And that's where it is. I think we're here because there's enough information out there globally to say that there is a problem. So that's my position. There shouldn't be any need to work with anybody. The issue simply is, don't over-serve, therefore there wouldn't be problems. If you are over-serveing, then we have problems, and we have problems.
Yeah, and like I approached the last meeting, right after we got done, I scheduled Frank Line to have, you know, we had a full day course for everybody that worked there. And, you know, some over-serving, over-serving, IDs, all that stuff that needs to be done. And I also had asked you, too, if you could copy me when you send something to the Selectmen. That way I can keep on top of it. I'm not telling you to work with me day in and day out every day, but if you're taking the time to write an email to the Selectmen, then how hard is it to add my email address onto that, and then I can keep on top of it? So if this incident happens, and I'm not there, I mean, I can't be there 80 hours a week, I can see if there's anything going on and keep on top of it as well, you know, so...
Do these emails go directly to you, Paul?
Excuse me?
Do the emails go directly to you? You don't have someone else handle it for you?
They don't go directly to me.
Okay. Anybody got anything else?
Nope, I guess, you know, I have it.
All right, Mike said bathroom facilities.
Like I said, yeah.
Paul, I think we're losing a connection with you. I can't hear you, you're gobbled.
Oh, okay.
Oh, now I got you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, like I said before, you know, if you're gonna take the time to email the Selectmen, and, you know, it doesn't take any more effort to say, I have my name on there, so I'm in the loop, and I can make sure I, you know, we're doing what we need to do. You know, I'm not in business to have somebody go down the street and have an accident, because I don't want that any more than anybody else does. And I can't be there, you know, 80 hours a week. I mean, nobody works 80 hours a week. I'm there, you know, probably 55, 50 hours a week, but, you know, if there's an incident, I want to know and try to, and try to correct it. And, you know, you say it happens, but I have. I've brought, you know, people in for training, and, you know, done, you know, what I can do on my end. And if there's still an issue, I need to know. It makes it easier for me to find an address of an internal problem if you guys are talking to me, so I can take a look and see what's happening, who was there, who they were being served by, and that type of stuff. And I don't think that's too much to ask for. I mean, if you already sent in an email to the Selectmen, then I can follow through with it as well, and, you know, make things better, so...
Paul, what I'm seeing is the Selectmen, is a whole room full of people here. We've got professional people, we've got residents. What bothers me is, is these residents that are out here, most of them are sober when they're out there driving. What's going to happen when we start losing them? That's something that I worry about. These people, I'm talking about innocent people that aren't impaired. Plus, we've got the marijuana thing that's about to happen, which is not your fault, or ours, but...
Right, but I have no control over that. I can't control if somebody smokes some marijuana after they have, they have a few drinks on their, on their ride home.
And don't get me wrong, I'm not saying you do.
They want pills, or they're doing heroin, and that's a huge epidemic in the whole area, the whole country. I can't control those things. But, like I said, I have invited the Selectmen, the police, the state police, anybody that wants to come, the fired upon, and that wants to come and do a visit any night of the week. You're more than welcome. I've said that since I've been open. You can see how our staff handle the things. You can watch how we serve people. I've had pre-training sessions, you know, every year I do a training session. And now Frank Line, I guess he retired, so this year we'll find out who's gonna do it this year. So I'm not in business to have people over-serve, because if I'm over-serveing people and they're in a situation, or there's a problem, I'm out of business. I don't want to be out of business, okay? But I'm trying to work with everybody, and I've said this many times now, and I keep repeating myself, is how hard is it to add my name onto an email so I can look into it further and correct if there is a situation? And, you know, not every situation, because they said I was at Train, and that necessarily means it was a fault of ours that we over-serve. They could have popped some pills, they could have shot some heroin, who knows? But, you know, this crazy was going on out in this world, and you hit the nail on the head, this whole marijuana thing is not going to be good for anybody, so... But I don't have no control over that, and neither do you. So you can't, you know, we can only handle the part of the serving end of it. And if people are doing other things, you know, we can't, we can't control that.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to see what you can do about preventing it from happening. It sounds to me like prevention is what needs to happen, and I'm not hearing a lot of that. You say you're training people, you've had three training sessions in as many years. How many people are on your staff right now that have had one of those trainings?
They've all been trained.
They've all been trained, they've all attended.
And that course is only required once every five years, and we do it every year, because I like to keep my people fresh.
Okay.
And, you know, I don't know if there's an incident, and I don't feel like, you know, our bartenders have been well-trained, and they, you know, are watching and paying attention. And if there's an incident that's going on, I can't tell if somebody's not notifying me. I don't know if there's, you know, I'm in-house, and I'm watching, and I'm watched. You know, we make sure they're not overflowing, they're not over-erving, and when I'm there. But if there's an incident that's going on, I can't address it if nobody tells me about it. You're saying, how are you preventing it? Well, I'm trying to prevent it, but I'm trying to work with everybody. If nobody's notifying me, there's a problem, I don't know if that is an external problem going on.
I guess my question, my question's simply going to be, why is this such an issue with your establishment, and we don't have the same issue with other establishments?
Okay, so, excuse me, listen to the towns that you're in and the establishment that you are. Are they restaurants that close at nine o'clock at night, or are they places that are open till midnight? Are people traveling? They've been out, they've gone out to eat somewhere, and they might have had a couple of drinks somewhere else. They come to trains because they want to listen to the band and dance for a couple hours, and they have a few drinks? We try to limit what we have, what we're serving people, but if they've had a few drinks before we get there, we don't know when. You know, when they're walking up to the bar, we like to see how's their actions. Are they staggering? Are they, when they're ordering a drink, are they slurring their words, or are they talking clearly? You know, these are all the things that, and the training courses that we take, and that's why I have it done every year instead of once every five years. And so the girls know, this is what you need to do. When they're talking, how are they talking? Are they talking clearly? Are they slurring their words? You know, if you say, oh, sorry, you know, I can't serve you another drink, I'll give you a water. So, you know, you can't tell sometimes if somebody shows up at 9:30, 10 o'clock, if they've already been out to dinner somewheres and had a couple of drinks, and then they have a couple of drinks with us, and then we notice, okay, now he's slurring a word or something, we're gonna cut you off. Doesn't mean we served you 10 drinks, we might only served you two drinks, but if you were somewhere else, we don't know you were somewhere else before. Okay, so...
Right, well, I guess my question still would be to the board, is that okay? I mean, is that okay? I mean, I'm not refuting that scenario, but I'm saying, is that okay? You have an establishment where, obviously, if this scenario is happening, or there's over-serving happening, you still have a situation where the commonality is this establishment, and you have these incidents linked to that establishment. So is that okay? I mean, so is that the establishment you want in your town? Is that business model, the model you want in your town? Does this, is this, does this fit well with public safety for your community? And that's the question for the Selectmen, I think.
Yeah, and we also have incidents, and we've talked about this before, where there might be an accident... might be an accident, or somebody leaving trains, and there's two businesses on that property, and I should've named them different, one's Trains for Stoppage at the store, and the other's Trains Tavern. And someone could be leaving there, where you come from, a team with trains, they might've just came to the store, bought a six-pack, that they were bringing home, on their way from work, or they were out somewheres, uh, at a friend's house, or went to dinner, and they stopped to take some beer off. So, did it clarify, did they leave the store, or did they leave the tavern? Give them, and the same thing, if they have a call, and the chief usually know that, if you get a call, what's to say? It says, "Oh, yeah, there's an accident in front of trains." Okay, so, is it related to Trains Tavern, is it related to the store? Or is somebody just coming down two oh two, and they're gonna turn left to turn into trains, whether it's the store or the tavern, and somebody comes behind in the rear end, that, that, the call goes out as trains, so it's logged in as trains? But, it's nothing that we did, we didn't cause that accident, it was somebody turning to come to the establishment, and go rear-ended by somebody, because some kid's texting, or not paying attention.
Well, it still makes me wonder how a woman can be so intoxicated, that she walks in the wrong house, within a, probably a mile, mile and a half of your establishment, and her boyfriend's dad is still standing in your parking lot, at the same time, and with a pile of vomit in front of him, and you say that he wasn't over-served at your establishment? If we asked that person, where would he say he got, got over-served?
Well, come to find out, that he, he was drinking, he had alcohol on his vehicle, so he was drinking in his car, and the girl went in, 'cause she was cold, 'cause it was winter time, and knocked on, and went in, into the house, 'cause she was cold, because she didn't, she still had to wait to walk to go home.
And she walked into the wrong house?
She knew she was at the wrong house.
I understood this gentleman was standing in your parking lot beside the parked car.
Yeah.
Is this hot, was the house right there, behind your establishment?
Yeah, I, I guess you didn't hear what I said, come to find out, he had alcohol in his car, so he had been drinking in his vehicle.
Right? This woman walked into somebody's house on Little River Road?
Yeah, in a day and a week, no.
And where's your business located?
About a mile, yeah, about a mile, I guess, from his, from his place.
He couldn't drive, so he was, he was outside of his car in your parking lot, that's the way it's stated here.
He'd been out there for over an hour, come to find out, he had alcohol in his vehicle when she left, he was sitting in his vehicle, drinking the alcohol he had in his vehicle, not from our establishment. And, there's again, if I'm contacting on this information, I can show you the camera...
Shouldn't your own people be contacting you, if somebody's hanging around your parking lot after hours?
It's not after hours, it's while we're open.
Uh, let me see. I'm sorry, 'cause the, the next sentence says that it was after, that, that, that the state police are getting a lot of calls after one o'clock in the morning.
Well, anyhow, we seldom do we have anybody in our south, one o'clock in the morning.
And we're not, we're not talking about, we're not talking about somebody that came over from New Hampshire, or something like that, we're talking about ones that are saying they came from your place.
Right, but what I just said, if you come over at, at midnight, we're, we're not, you're saying these incidents after one o'clock, you're assuming we're open till one o'clock, we're very seldom that we have customers at one o'clock in our establishment, that's why we do last call at midnight, and most people by twelve, fifteen, twelve twenty are cleared out.
Okay.
So, if you, if you've got an incident that happened at one fifteen or one twenty, then they went someplace else besides being at our place, because, uh, that's again, I can show you on the cameras, here it is, twelve fifteen, there's nobody inside, everybody's gone.
Well, it seems that our, our fire and EMS people are picking up a lot of, a lot off the street now. It just seems to have, to have grown, we realize the population's bigger, we realize a lot of things, but, we just seem to hear a lot from your, your particular business.
Okay, so, you're saying you hear a lot of talk?
Well...
So now you're saying somebody's talking is the problem?
No, I'm saying that, that something else is the problem, but I don't know what it is yet.
Well, if you hear people talking, oh, oh, this, that, or the other thing, it's talk, how you gonna prove it, come down and see me, we'll look on the camera, that's what I'm saying. If someone's talking, and they're saying, "Oh, this happened, or that, or whatever, blah, 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 blah," or, uh, "Oh, somebody got over-served at one o'clock in the morning," when we're not even open at one in the morning, uh, then, if you hear it, talk, come down and see me, I've said this ever since I've been open, come down and see me, and we'll take a look at you, at the situation, and that's why I have all the cameras there.
So, you're gonna, you're offering that, that's, that's to the state police?
I've offered that, since I opened the place, I've offered that, we had this meeting last year at this time.
Well, again, I think it's the actual business model, the, the business itself, the what, the, the attraction that's there, I mean, if you're having enough people that say they're coming from there, or associated with there, that are causing a problem, and then there's something about the way that business is conducted, whether it's the model, whether it's the clientele that's attracted, whether it's the hours that are kept, that are generating these type of concerns. So, again, the question is, is that the model that the town's comfortable with? Um, I mean, obviously, if you have enough incidences that are either directly or indirectly related to an establishment, it's the establishment, the way the, the, the model is being run, that is the problem. So, that, you know, that can, you know, it's up to you whether or not you wanna modify that, whether or not you're satisfied with what's going on here, but I think that, you know, the way I prefer to do business is, you, you go to the source of where the problem is, and if the source is this, then that source needs to change somehow.
I've changed things, and I've done all the training programs, and I've done what I need to do, and I've told you repeatedly, and repeatedly, and I'm repeating it again for over ten times tonight, so it's comfortable, I get interested. Any, any other questions, um, with the problem, let you know, let me know about it, so, if you're telling me there's a problem directly or indirectly, I'm doing what I need to do in-house, and if there seems to be a problem that I don't see in-house, because I'm not running a business, I have four businesses, I don't run businesses that run shitty, I run good businesses. Anybody that knows me, and knows all my businesses that I own, I run good business. In a business situation, I wanna know about it, and that's why I've told you many times, if you would let me know about it, and you don't.
Well, I, I don't, that's not a fair statement, because every time you speak to a trooper who's investigating something that's related to your business, you're informed about it. So, I mean, you're obviously, everything that we mentioned tonight, you've been informed of, so you do know what's going on, the troopers have talked to you about what's going on, and you're aware of it.
You're explaining, everything that happens on me, this incident is actually, you had all over the road with Mr. Brunel, the trooper came in, yes, we talked to him, we knew about it, we showed him the receipt, we showed him what he had to drink there, by the time that he was there, and during the time that we served him, we did not over-serve him, okay?
Right, so, a, a, again, a, again, let, let...
And we, and there was the trooper, and we did know about the incident, that's something that we can't, but you have to be on the wing, I mean, we're the only ones down.
If the issue is the person that was drinking before they arrived, they drank while you were there, and then they left, and they have a BAC of a, a two, a two-something, a, again, I'm just stating what we know, all right? So, the, the question, the question comes out again, is that, is that acceptable? Is that okay? I mean, the, the, what's facilitating that? So, that's...
So, if you wanna take a look at Mr. Brunel, and the time that he was, the time of the accident was like forty-eight minutes, so where was he those forty-eight minutes? That's not our responsibility if he was there drinking, whether he, whatever he was drinking, and he continued to drink with, with his friends, and wherever they went when they left our establishment. That's what I'm saying, you, I wanna know of these incidents, because then I have to look at them, and see if we did over-serve them, or we didn't over-serve them, okay? Because if somebody left our place at eleven o'clock, and they got in an accident at twelve fifteen, the youth, for example, or where were they that last hour and fifteen minutes, and what were they doing? And, you know, and we can look at the receipt, and say, "Hey, we served them this many drinks," and, and by the time that two or three hours they were there, and then you're missing an hour, hour and a half of timeline, and then, "Oh, they came, that we were at trains earlier." Okay, well, that was an hour before. So, if they were drinking somewheres else, or at a friend's house drinking, or they were smoking a joint, or they popped pills, that's not our problem, at the time they were in our place, we served them properly.
Any other questions? Well, Paul, I guess that's it for tonight.
Okay.
We'll be in touch.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Bye.
Can we ask a question of the state trooper? Something I just don't understand. What is the difference between going to trains, having drinks, too many drinks, versus going to a marijuana cafe, and doing that stuff? Isn't it kinda like the same thing?
Well, any intoxication is a problem.
So, these people that are at cafes, and maybe doing too much of whatever they're doing, having, you know, these things existed, do you have ways of testing them? If they have an accident? Yeah?
Yep, yes.
Okay, that's my question.
What's the test, Sergeant?
Well, you'd have to do a blood test, currently, is a blood test.
Yeah, you know, really, is it, so it's a, it's a blood THC test?
THC.
Yep.
And, you know what the liquid of, of it is?
Well, again, I mean, that's, that's the big question.
That hasn't been, that hasn't been determined.
Hasn't been, no.
It's in Colorado, it was...
Five.
Five nanograms.
Five nanograms, yeah.
That, that's a whole other serious issue, but I guess, I guess, just, just so everybody understands, my position on, on trains, is that I'm only telling you what has come to my attention of this establishment, that either, and again, it's very difficult, because many of the instances aren't directly, you can't say directly, 'cause it happens at a satellite location, but when you talk to people, and, and you talk to enough people, and they say, "I'm coming from trains," you know, then you have to look at the total information you have, and say, "Well, is there a problem there?" There isn't a problem, yeah?
When you're asking the question, what, "Are you coming from trains?", you're, you're asking it, you're not leading them into that, they're just telling you, "They're coming from trains."
They're, they're coming, they're right, we're not, you know, they're not saying, "We're coming from a friend's house where I was drinking," they're not saying, "We're coming from some other establishment," they're saying, and the chief's got the same experience. So, if you're talking to enough people that are intoxicated and causing a problem, and whether it comes out either because you ask them directly, or through the course of the conversation, like this woman here volunteered, that she's worried about her husband being consistently over-served, then it's, you know, that's a problem. Uh, so, and, and I do think, I mean, trains runs the way it runs, I mean, it's a tavern, it runs a certain way, it, he, there is a certain business model there, um, and the question is, you know, obviously, that establishment, one way or another, is a focal point for problematic behavior, either onsite or at a satellite location. Because, you know, we're not soliciting this, we're not targeting trains, we're not looking for, for problems at trains, these are things that are coming to our attention independently, and we're coming across them either through a crash, through a fight, through a, a person that's staggering down the road intoxicated, to a, a domestic situation where one of the parties have come, where stated that they've come from that establishment. And again, can we say definitively, you know, "They left there, and they drove a straight line"? Sometimes we can, sometimes we can't, but if you're talking to, you know, a, a number of people, and, and that name, that focal point keeps coming up, then I would say, that's a problem. Now, whether it's the total business model, whether it's the fact that they're open as late as they're open, whether it's the fact that it's a bar, and they, you know, serve food, you know, drinks are the primary focus, and the food is an addition, you know, you know, is that a good model to have? I don't know, I'm not making a judgment on any of that, I'm simply telling you, this is what we're seeing, uh, I'm not seeing this in any of my other communities, and, you know, and, and, you know, Paul's right, I mean, are these other places open that late? Are they predominantly serve alcohol? No, but guess what? We don't have problems there. They do serve alcohol, but we don't have problems there.
How many crashed telephone poles we've seen the last, the last couple of years here? And, with drunk drivers being, being, being a problem.
So, again...
And that's, and that's around town, around trains.
Well, absolutely.
I'm not even including what Sanford must be getting, and I, sometimes I make it over to New Hampshire too.
So, again, I mean, you know, I, I, my, my guess would be that if there was a different business model there, um, if, if alcohol was, was not the primary mode of, uh, uh, you know, attraction there, um, if there was no alcohol there, that we probably would have a significant cut in, in calls generated from, uh, from that.
Or if things were watched closely, like you were trying to say, and he's not listening to?
Well, again, I mean, the, the, I, I, you know what, and I, and again, because these things aren't necessarily always, um, there's not a direct call for service linking the call to the establishment, I have to consistently ask, you know, periodically, are there any incidences that are related to trains? And again, it's not a direct line oftentimes, so you, you'll, you'll get an email, which most of the time I'll forward to you, like, you know, "This is still a problem." I don't see any abatement, um, any, any less of an issue twelve months later than we had from the last meeting that we had, uh, which was twelve months ago. And, and I stated at that meeting that, you know, that my position was simply that if, if we continue to get information, that that information will be passed on to the town, and then the town will have to make a decision, if they wanted an establishment like that, or they wanted to continue with alcohol being served in that establishment, that, you know, that's my position. If, if you have a problem, you go to the source, I, I don't, I don't feel it's, it's pragmatic to, to, you know, chip at it from the sides, I mean...
Another observation I have personally, is that we were in Dry Town up until recently, I don't remember what it is now, four years, three years back, four years back, I guess, and I, I'm sure that you guys are not just signaling trains out with this, you, you deal with this daily, in all different scenarios, all different towns around here. So, it's not like, I mean, they're, they're kind of in a spot, they are the only, they are the only, however I guess you'd call it, in love with it at this point in time, but still.
Well, again...
The incidents are, seem to be too high, even though they are the only ones around.
Right, and, and I think you also have to look at the public safety infrastructure you have for the community, I mean, this is a rural community with a rural public safety infrastructure. You don't have, you know, so to speak, a, a generic police department twenty-four seven in your community, you have the state police, you have, you know, the, the fire department with their resources, but yet you have an establishment that is, you know, should probably be in a, in a Sanford, or, or a benefit, or something that has an infrastructure around it, where they can, you know, really monitor that much more closely, or at least, you know, have the infrastructure that would support that. I don't think the town, objectively speaking, has the infrastructure to support a, a, a establishment that is run on that business model.
I'm sorry, pardon, my name's Deb Wilson, and, uh, I'm a resident here in town. What I'm hearing over and over from you, are you kind of in a backward way here, kind of recommending that we don't serve alcohol at trains?
Well, I, I mean, I, I...
I mean, I'm hearing that...
I would, I would say that, generally speaking, for police work in general, alcohol and, and, uh, substance issues causes about eighty percent of our, our calls for service are issues. So, if you can mitigate that, uh, any way that you can, I think is a good thing. I think that, again, I think you can cert- have an establishment, like we have with other communities, uh, that have restaurants, that serve alcohol, we don't have these problems, um, you know, that's a business model that I think is certainly sustainable under the rural format, um, and, uh, we don't have these issues. So, you know, what the outlier here is, you have a, an establishment, um, that I, you know, I think it's fair to say is, is, you know, it's a tavern, it's called a tavern, which, uh, is, is centered on, um, on alcohol, uh, then you're gonna have, you know, related issues. And then you, then to compound that, you don't have, uh, the public safety infrastructure that you would have in an organized community with an, you know, with a full-time, uh, you know, local police department or whatnot, so you have both of these things going on.
I guess a follow-up question, do you see, uh, other establishments where they allow alcohol with food consumption, or have a, you know, per-person drink maximum?
Well, I, I don't know, because I don't have problems, I haven't delved into what these other models are, I know that they're responsible, because I'm not getting, uh, related calls to them. So, if I'm not getting calls, then they're, then they're following the rules, and that's my point, is that if you follow the rules, there shouldn't be any hand-holding involved here, the rules are quite clear.
Right.
You know, and if you over-serve, or if you have a, a place that's attracting people that are drinking before, and drinking after, and drinking while you're there, then I think that, again, that's a decision for the town to make, is that, is that appropriate for Lebanon? That's, that's my point.
Thank you.
Well, you could pretty well talk this over.
I'd like to know what Selectman Neto has to say about this. He's been awfully quiet this whole night. What's your, what's your thoughts?
Well...
That's happened with you a year ago, so I wouldn't know your thoughts.
I didn't, I didn't vote to liquor in town. And I'm not, the sergeant here explained it, but we don't have a support. What, maybe we have to start now, day one, and if anything happens, just do the right thing.
What's the right thing?
Well, I, I, I don't really know what our function is.
Maybe we can get a police force.
I think the function is either allow them to have liquor or put things in place to limit the liquor.
Right.
So that's what you're looking at?
Well, yeah, I'm looking at the whole thing. If, okay, somebody drank on the way home, that, that's possible, but not every time.
Right.
And what do they, they sell liquor in the front, don't they? Uh, beer?
Yeah, out of the store, you mean? I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
So one's as bad as the other. If they go and have a drink and then buy a six-pack...
Yeah, and it goes, I guess, I guess it goes together. Again, he's right, we don't parse, are you coming from, you know, when someone says they're coming from trains, usually, the, uh, either directly or indirectly, it's indicated they're coming from the, the tavern part, not the quick stop.
Because of the situation that they're in.
Well, yeah, yeah, or, or what they're saying. I mean, and this is unsolicited most of the time. I mean, that, that person there stopped by and, and, and volunteered that. I mean, so, I mean, and again, we've been to domestic situations where, again, you know, one party or the other is, is saying, you know, they wish, you know, this wasn't happening, but it's a regular occurrence, and this is where they're coming from. So, again, are they over, are they drinking to the point where there's a problem at that establishment every time? I, I, I can say I don't absolutely know, but if you're talking to a whole bunch of people, and the theme is they're coming from there, then I would say that, you know, objectively looking at that, you'd ask the question, is that a problem?
Yes. I guess the only other comment I would have, because I sat in here for three years, I've had many meetings with Sergeant Shapiro as well. I think you hit the nail on the head, and it may be finally sunk in with me, with maybe too late, because I'm not in anymore, but I think it comes down to the business model, really. And what I'm saying by that, you might be, I know Paul well enough, I know his other businesses and acting and things like, he does run a good business. There is definitely a problem here, and we can't turn a blind eye to. We're here every year, this time of year, we're having the same conversation as a town. Your winter blues kick in, et cetera, et cetera. People might be drinking more, I don't know, but there's a problem this time of year more so, maybe more so than the summertime. I don't know. But, um, maybe it's not just the servers. You know, maybe there's more education has to be with the bouncers, or, you know, whoever's watching, whoever, as they're coming in, you know. You know, I've seen other establishments that do that. I've seen others that have been trained better, that, you know, they're watching as people are coming in, not just wondering if they got served too much or not, but that the whole group is acting as a cohesive unit, as a business model to, okay, we're gonna have to ask you to leave, et cetera, you know, we're not gonna serve you tonight, you know. This is a bigger picture than just some training to see who's overpouring or not, you know, and let's be honest, tips are involved, when money's involved, that happens. You know, so, I mean, you can't just blame it on the servers themselves. I think it has to be a bigger picture, and I think, honestly, I think trains needs to come in with a better program, present it to the board, and I think it needs to be better critiqued than it has been, because we all come in, you know, not knowing what the heck's going on, fumbling around, trying to become selectmen and do what we, we think is right, but this is, this is bigger than that. It needs to have more attention on it. And we had an upside, I don't know if the upside-down car accident on Depot Road Christmas Eve night came from there or not, but she was definitely drunk. So, and I don't wanna blame that on trains, because I don't know, but I mean, there's a problem in the town, I think it goes...
I think the town from anywhere.
I think it goes to education within the town as well, to the townsfolk, because the other part of this is, Paul's right. You know, people are, could be drinking, or are drinking, other places, and then landing there as well. So it really comes down to a community effort, I think, as well. You know, better education all, all the way around.
Yeah.
You know, the designated driver thing, nobody ever thought about that back in the sixties and seventies.
Yeah.
It comes down to better education.
I sort of made a private study on my own of what goes on, sometimes around eleven at night. I live single, so I, I, that's why I can't sleep, so I take a ride.
Kind of creepy.
And I know what a lot of times when the, when the fire calls and EMS calls are, and, where air and all that. And I don't go out there just to see the damage. I go out there to see what happened. And usually, you can, you can testify about it, I'm quite a bit behind usually, and I'm out of everybody's way, but... To see this time after time after time, and no, it's not always from trains, absolutely not. But it, they have their share. I'd like to see us do something, calm it down, if that's possible.
Sergeant Shapiro.
But where, where can we go?
I think Sergeant Shapiro's got a great point. I've sat here more times than the rest of you guys in here for the same meetings. And I think that this is not his, his place to alert the town.
Yep.
Okay, he's done that, and done that, and done that. I think right now, from my perspective, okay, what needs to happen now is the liquor license is renewed, usually October, November, if I remember correctly. You need to start looking at it now. Bring him in here, let's start a business plan, let's start seeing what we can put together now. You know, before you get to that point where, oh, we're just gonna rubber stamp this thing, because it's in front of us tonight.
Right.
My suggestion.
I think if you have, and I, obviously, I'm not a businessman, but I think a business thing that's appropriate is where, you know, alcohol isn't the primary focal point of the establishment. You know, I think people are going there because of the alcohol, and then, you know, there's entertainment on the side, and there's food on the side, but that's not the focal point. So therefore, you, you know, you start to have some of these issues. And that, that's, I, I'm not a business guy, and I'm not, you know, I'm not saying anything, but I'm, I'm simply saying that if, if, if you're gonna have people that are going to a place to drink, you know, that, that's what you're gonna get. People that drink before, drink while you're there, maybe drink while you're after, and then you have a problem, so...
Yeah, go ahead, Dana.
From the conversation on the phone, it appears that trains is defending the bartender. There are tables throughout the building. Those are done by the servers. He said that the, there was a printout of the bill. It would seem as though that was probably from at the bar. Is there any consideration as to the servers and their actual over-serving? How does he differentiate between the bar and the tables, or does he?
Oh, you're saying you can sit at the bar, then go sit at a table? Yeah, I guess so, use computers.
I just want to add to Dana's thing, too. In the case that he kept throwing out there, there was a large group of people that were associated with that party. I talked to one of his friends down at company shortly afterwards, when he came in for coffee, and I happened to be there. It was a large group. So what's to say that he only had twenty bucks, but after his twenty bucks was gone, maybe his buddy was buying a round, and then this one was buying a round? I mean, you can't just go by the bill what he consumed. You know, you have to actually probably look at the tape and figure out what he actually personally consumed.
Yeah, I, I, I think that that's, I think that's a reality, any place where you have that, a table, where you're buying rounds or whatever. I mean, I, I, I just think there's a lot of ambiguity there.
Right.
And, and again, I'm not gonna make a judgment on that. I'm, I'm simply stating what's coming to my attention, and the fact that it's linked to that establishment. So I think if you're looking at that, you'd say, what, what's the problem there? And it, and, and, and the problem clearly is, is that, for whatever reason, people that are over-invading are, are either going to, coming from, and, and causing a problem either there or at a satellite location, but the commonality between all this is trains. So, let's look at that, and why is that? And, and, and again, I, I don't think that you can, just for the very reasons that you said, that's why I don't give it an awful lot of credence that, you know, if you're there with three or four people, and, and other people are buying rounds or whatever, there's all kinds of ways to get, I think, I'm not saying it's nefarious on, on trains behalf, but I'm just saying that the way these things work, I don't think you can always say definitively that that person's got one bar tab, and everything that they drank is gonna be recorded sufficiently.
Right.
And it's, and it's easy as a person to get caught up in what's going on.
Yep.
And you just forget. But...
I mean, I'm not trying to...
I don't think anybody wants to really start, sort of, is wanting to, planning to kill someone or have an accident when they leave the bar. But it does happen.
Happens everywhere.
Why don't we have that man come in?
He, I don't know how much more healing he has to do, but I understood he was just shut down, go here.
Have him come in and we'll talk to him.
I mean, he, I, my guy is, he's, he knows what to do. The, the question is, is that he's gonna, he knows what to do to make this right. The question is whether or not he wants to do it or not, because, and I don't know the dollars and cents of it, but it's pretty obvious that this is a, this is a lucrative endeavor that he has on this model. So he's not gonna, you know, and I'm not saying it's an indictment to him or anything else, I'm saying that's just business. So the reality of it is, is that this is working, and, and that's why, that's why this model's the way it is. And, and again, you know, the, the question for the town is, is that what you want in your community, knowing that it, it has, you know, the side effects that it's having?
It's been quite an evening. I think I want to say thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
And we need to bring this to a close. Thank you, Sergeant Shapiro. I realize you've been on the line quite a bit here tonight. Selectman Neto's made a suggestion that we get Paul back in here again. I would say, I don't know how much time he needs, but maybe when you call him, see if he can...
I'll call him, find out how much longer he'll be laid up.
He needs to be in better health, too.
Well, he can't, yeah, because he can't really be up, but I'll find out.
So, definitely, we're probably talking weeks or something, so, at least. Hopefully, we'll see you, have to see you guys at bad incidents in many times here, out there at night times. It's been night times, it seems the worst ones, but for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gene.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. Oh, you folks, thank you. We got any other business?
See you tomorrow morning, Dan.
Yeah.
No, Stephen's.
And you, oh, we got Tracy.
Yeah.
Well, that was...
Go home, go.
I thought we had...
She doesn't need you, she's got me.
No, not both of them. No, the one was cancer.
You said the...
The first one was cancer.
Labor negotiations, just cross that off.
It wasn't cancer.
Okay. And we do have an executive session, so...
Oh, and that came back again?
Crossed it off.
Huh?
Apparently, it has.
Well, there was one away. There was one that went away, this one didn't go. The second one didn't go.
I thought they were both.
The agenda only said there was one, right? There was two? So what was, which one are we doing? The first one or the second one?
The second one, yes.
Second one?
On Jan's desk.
Okay.
The second one.
You guys make it a quick one.
Yeah, just don't trip Harrison, you got that wrapped on your toe.
I make a motion, we go in executive session.
What is the, uh, what are you going in for?
All five, six A.
Personnel issues?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.